Good morning. Good morning. Are we, yes, we are on record, thank you. Now, let's just make sure that we have the right panel. Is this the Radiological Society of South Africa? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Would you do this though? Would you please place yourself on record indicating who are the other panel members? And also put on record your names and then indicate to us who is going to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Richard Tuft. I'm the Executive Director of the Radiological Society of South Africa. As a brief background, I am a diagnostic radiologist and I have worked, I am a diagnostic radiologist. And I have worked in both the private sector and the public sector. On my left is Dr. Sheldon Godina, who is the President of the Radiological Society. And he is a radiologist in private practice. And on my right is Mr. Martin Berthold from Verbovets. I will be doing the presentation.
Yes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Chair, first of all, thank you for inviting us to make this presentation. I should just note that our attendance was requested by the panel. At the time of the request, we asked if there were any specific issues that the panel wished to interrogate us on. And we were informed there were none, but we should make a general presentation.
If I may know, you have been aware of this inquiry, no?
I very much so.
Yeah. Is there any specific reason perhaps why you chose not to participate in the debate? In the public hearings?
Well,
You have made a
The public hearings were voluntary.
Yes.
And it was clearly stated
Perhaps if we, one of us must speak so that you could hear. You did make a written submission. Is that right?
Correct, we made a written submission.
Okay. And then the public hearings?
The information we received from the Commission was that public hearings were for additional information that hadn't been presented in written submissions. We felt at that time there was no additional information that we wanted to put forward. We noted your request not to repeat the same information, so we did not apply to make any oral submission.
Perhaps you, the master of the miscommunication, because the purpose of those general hearings was really to understand how the various stakeholders interact with one another. That's why most of those who, most of all of those who made the written submission came to talk to us about that. How do you interact with hospital and other stakeholders? Would you ask, or must you be in possession of a specialized training to be able to read and interpret those images?
Any doctor or healthcare professional can look at the images. Where the radiologist is distinguished from the rest is the radiologist is trained at a much higher level in interpretation. And the difference in the radiologist from other doctors is the radiologist's primary function is to produce a written report on the findings of those images and carry the responsibility and the medical legal responsibility for the accuracy of that report.
But I'm asking you because we were told by one of the doctors that it's something that they can do as well. That's what we were told. So I just want to know precisely what's the difference?
In the papers I submitted to you, there was a paper written by David Levine called "The Moratorium Lecture", and in that he deals with the issue of the difference in competence of reporting of various groups comparing specialist radiologists with non-specialists. And the literature very clearly shows that the diagnostic outcome is not the same between those who have been formally trained to report on images and those who have not. So the answer to your question is anybody can, but the outcome and the level of competence difference. We will specifically deal with the comments made by Professor Aboustad Legeron.
Well, I'm asking you this because as a late person who unfortunately has had to go to various doctors, you come back with these images and you give it to your doctor or specialists and you post them somewhere and it looks and then start telling you what the problem is in addition to their report. So that's why I'm asking you, but do you have to have a specialized knowledge? That is just particularly within the knowledge of those who are in your profession?
We would hope that all clinicians have a working knowledge of the images they use in their speciality. And we encourage that. There is no fee sharing with any third party. And it was a question asked in one of the previous submissions, how radiologists pay for the space in hospitals. Radiologists pay rental in the hospitals at market-related rates unrelated to turnover.
You practice in groups. That is, a number of radiologists come together, is that right?
It varies.
It varies.
In small centers, small towns, there may be one or two radiologists in practice. In larger centers, there may be radiologists in 30, up to 30 in a practice.
Yes.
But even in the larger centers, there will be multiple practices. There are 85 practices in the country, so there is no market concentration.
So where you practice as a group in these major cities that you disallow, does each radiologist has his own practice, you know, specific practice? This differently? Whatever patient that he sees and what is paid for comes to you, does it go to the group? And then you share?
It will go to the group.
And then the group shares the open project?
Correct.
And then do you, does a group come together to determine what needs to be charged for this or that?
The practices are, what is charged for them, no. Radiologists are very much fee takers. Radiologists are different, I think, from most specialists inasmuch as you will find. The average radiologist will charge the benefit determined by the funders. Radiologists do not charge multiples of the benefits. And radiologists do not charge additional fees for P and B cases.
But within the group, do you come together to discuss what you can and cannot accept?
Cannot accept.
With a bit of a tariff?
No, I don't think that's even a discussion. I think radiologists are fee takers and because they have a large number of patients coming into the practices with minimal credit control, because these are not repeated patients as you would expect in a general practice or in a specialist practice. So most of the patients coming in are new patients. Most people will go to radiologists once every few years, not every week or regularly. So the way that operates is radiologists will, fees will match the benefits provided by the funder that that patient belongs to.
So in other words, are you saying that the radiologists have no stake whatsoever on what to charge for their services? They simply accept what is offered to them by the different medical schemes?
That's correct. They are perfectly entitled to charge more than the benefits, but most will choose not to and be fee takers and take the benefit as the fee.
Would they take something which they consider to be unreasonable?
I imagine if it was unreasonable, they wouldn't take it, but we don't have that situation. The Radiological Society has a policy on guidelines. Now, it's important that there are guidelines to direct referring doctors and users of radiology services how they should do things and what they should do. We are a small country. We have a small number of radiologists and it really doesn't make sense for us to reinvent the wheel. So what we have done is we've looked at the best of the international guidelines. We have taken these and we've either used them as they are or adopted them for the South African environment. Two views, the first one is the ACR, the American College of Radiology, appropriateness criteria. We have a license to use that and distribute that. This classifies every radiological intervention on a scale from zero to nine, with zero being not indicated and nine being highly indicated. And we have circulated these to the funders as an indication of what is appropriate radiology in modern current practice. We have made an arrangement with the Royal College of Radiologists. And you will see on the image on the screen, there is the opening screen of Irefer, which is a computer-based decision support system. This is on the iPhone. And you will see bottom left is the Radiological Society logo indicating that we have approval and licensing to use this product. This has been sent to all medical schemes. And what this does is that it allows the referring doctor on desktop, tablet, smartphone, when he or she has a clinical situation and is not aware of what the best imaging process to use, this will guide them into the process. Private radiology in South Africa is hospital-based. There are 85 major practices. If we look at the numbers of radiologists registered or practices registered with the practice numbering system, there are more than that, but this includes radiologists who are not actively in practice or may have retired. So effectively, there are 85 private practices in the country. All these practices provide a total service. All will have CT and computerized tomography, but most of these will have MRI. There is
Chair, I just want to ask a question. You say the radiologist's practice is hospital-based. Why is it, is it because of the equipment that they need to use? Is it a matter of preference?
If you look at the average practice, approximately 50% of the work done by the practice will be generated by the hospital in which the practice is situated. So these are patients in the wards or patients coming from the consulting rooms of the doctors who are attached to that hospital. And the other half comes from outside. So it makes a lot of sense, rather than having to have a radiology department in the hospital to deal with the inpatients, and this is patients, ICUs, casualty wards, and then have a separate department to deal with other patients. There is no reason why that should not happen, but there will be a duplication of resources. And you can imagine a practice doing that would then probably have to have two CT scanners, two MRIs where you can have one if you do it all in one place. There is almost invariably one practice per hospital. And those practices provide a 24-hour service to the hospitals, to emergency units, and to the surrounding general practitioners and specialists who are in the area. Radiologists generally do not have any fee differentiation for after hours services. And as mentioned earlier, radiologists are generally fee takers in that they charge medical scheme rates. The Radiological Society is involved in peer review processes. And this is peer review both to look at billing methodology, which really relates to the way that radiologists are practicing. And we are involved in two operations in this with firstly, with Very Red. Very Red, you remember, did a presentation to the panel. Radiology was covered in two or three sentences. In that presentation, there was a question from one member of the panel about leases, but radiology doesn't have significant market concentration. And we have an interactive approach to look at outlying billing practices through Very Red. And we will assist in making sure that the radiologists are billing appropriately for the clinical indications. We've had a peer review process with a major medical scheme. Of the 85 practices, 20 practices were identified.
The tariffs?
We've had an annual escalation at CPI.
But I mean, in terms of taking the process?
Well, we're precluded. I mean, we have done our internal, we have done cost studies internally, but we are unable to publish them. We are unable to bring in new codes. We're unable to implement any of the work.
Have you made any attempts to find out what is the process forward with regard to the NRP?
There is no forward process that we are aware of. The whole thing is in a total state of limbo. And this is really our request to you that we perceive one of the things that should come out of this whole inquiry is that we desperately need a mechanism to be able to do this work. It's not there.
Yes. If there is a rest factor, it means you are all.
I'm still agree. Perhaps I should, and you may have heard this from others, I'm just getting off this point in relation to NHRPL processes. For many reasons, not the least of which I acted for HASA in the context of the Commission's intervention. Acted for parties insofar as NHRPL process was concerned, including setting aside. So I have a long history in this particular industry and the legal ramifications associated therewith. The very real difficulty is that all provider groupings, and I represent many, face is the reality that as a group they cannot get together and discuss what would and wouldn't be appropriate.
This is a challenge I articulated before the Commission at the time of the intervention and in fact encouraged the Commission before they intervened to engage with the parties to try and find a way forward to avoid the very scenario which providers find themselves in. The reality of the industry is that from my perspective, in any event, a statutory umbrella has to be created through which will then create a safe harbor where parties can get together and discuss what would be appropriate. And in particular for purposes of developing a non-binding, and I emphasize non-binding guideline. And I think the NHRPL process in concept was a very good idea. In concept, it was about saying, let's go back to ground zero. Let's accept that the prices that we see in the market today may not necessarily be appropriate. Some may be inappropriately low, often the case, particularly in the case of many specialist providers, GPs and the like. And others may be inappropriately high. What we sit with is a world where inflation and CDI has simply been implied somewhat blindly to a benchmark which is no longer frankly relevant. The idea of going back to a zero-based costing model would be to say, well, let's ascertain what a reasonable rate of return should be for each of the provider groupings. And we take it down to the base level and we build it up from there. And that was the intention of the RPL process. And I think, as I say, in concept, it is a very good idea. The difficulty with the NHRPL or RPL process, as has been differently described, is that in the context of those engagements, a statutory framework was not in fact created by which parties could meaningfully engage. What they found themselves having to do is to engage through third parties such as Healthman, who would collect information, aggregate it, and provide it in order to avoid the fact that there was a sensitivity in relation to the application of the Competition Act. In short, it was a hugely inefficient process. The reality though is that, as you're aware, in terms of the National Health Act in section 90, there is a statutory dispensation which could be utilized and indeed should be utilized for the purpose of re-engaging the NHRPL process. But let's do it properly, not through the Council of Medical Schemes, but through the Department of Health, through the appropriate statutory framework, so that these zero-based guidelines can be established. And I think if there's any takeaway that this panel has probably can take from this whole process, and I suspect you've heard this more than once, is that that process needs to be engaged in. It's the only way you can get to the bottom of whether or not the current charges are or aren't reasonable. It's the only way you can get away from the difficulty that certain provider groupings have significant countervailing power, are able to effectively dictate to schemes what they should be reimbursed at. And other provider groupings are price takers and are simply at the women's world of the medical schemes. And so when looking at this timeline, I think the key point that I want to leave with you is that I urge you to engage with the regulators, in particular the Department of Health, to encourage the re-establishment of a framework where the parties can engage meaningfully. Because at this point, it's not possible. And the very difficulty, as Richard has indicated, that we face now is that there have been significant developments in the various provider grouping sectors, significant technological developments. Codes aren't being allocated. Certain services are not being appropriately reimbursed for. And arguably, certain services are being over-reimbursed for because there have been technological efficiencies which have been brought to bear which are not being recognized. This is not a function of the will of the provider. This is a function of the fact that the providers have found themselves effectively trapped in a world which isn't working for either the provider, the consumer, or the funders.
Were you involved in the High Court, again, sorry. Could you just hold on for a second? I just want to finalize this matter with your colleague. Were you involved in the litigation in the High Court or did you follow that up?
I was the lead attorney involved for one of the key applicants. He's involved in setting aside the RPL. What needs to be understood is that the parties who brought the application were not unhappy with the concept of an RPL. What they're unhappy with was the protocol, that manner by which that RPL was ultimately determined or not determined. And you know, from where I'm sitting, the difficulty was is that the Department of Health didn't like some of the outcomes which that investigation yielded. In certain cases, perhaps much to their surprise, it was established that the current rates of reimbursement were inappropriately low. And they raised the issue of sample sizes. And at the end of the day, certain practices, I think, were comfortable, but many were not with the outcome because ultimately the department deviated from the outcome which those studies yielded. And that was the, and then sought to impose a guideline which was then inappropriately low. And it was that which the parties challenged. So it needs to be understood that for most parties, it wasn't the fact of the RPL or the concept of it that presented a difficulty. It was the manner in which the process was undertaken and more specifically how the results of that process were applied or not applied.
Now, did the parties consider the process that followed by the pricing committee that determines appropriately in the context of pharmaceutical?
I'm talking about the dispensing fee.
Right.
I also acted for the pharmacist in the challenge to the dispensing fee. I was the lead attorney along with my colleague, then turned forward in that process. Interestingly, and of course, one hoped that the department post that process would have appreciated the need to engage more closely with the industry in order to determine
I mean, one of the reasons why the Constitutional Court shut down the process was precisely because there were factors that the pricing committee had not taken into consideration. So the issue there was not so much about whether or not it's constitutional to charge appropriately, to determine an appropriate fee, but rather the process, you know, of how we do that. Although, you know, extensive resources had been expended in the process, but there were key factors which the Court outlined which had to be taken into consideration in determining the appropriateness or otherwise of a fee. So what I want to know is whether that kind of process, was it consented, you know, by the parties in the context of the Pierce Office? What, the reference price list?
So the reference price list, so just to deal with those two points. The one insofar as the Constitutional Court challenged was concerned, of course, as you appreciate, we were first before the Cape High Court and then the Fourth Circuit of Appeal before we ended up in the Constitutional Court. And the debate there was the appropriateness of the dispensing fee which had been set. And the argument was it was set at an inappropriately low level. And there were technical issues around the pricing committee and what it shouldn't have done. But that aside, the real issue that arose there is that they had been insignificant, they hadn't been sufficiently sensitive to the fact that you have different categories of pharmacy. You had many community pharmacies who didn't enjoy the volumes that the inner-city pharmacies did, who would have been put out of business. They also didn't consider the cost of dispensing very high value pharmaceutical products where the physical costs of dispensing them are.
I don't want you to repeat what we said there. All I'm raising is whether, because my recollection is that in that case, we did set out some of the factors that committees that determine these matters ought to look at when they determine this. So what I'm asking is whether, were these were the considerations that were set out in that decision ever considered in the process of determining the national price list?
I don't know whether the, whether it was taken into account in the case of the RPL. What I can say is that it was a very different process. Firstly, there was a process of engagement in the context of RPL. It wasn't a unilateral determination. There were studies performed, which wasn't the case in the context of the dispensing fee. So I would say that certainly a lot more effort was made to engage. The difficulty is it broke down at the level of the ultimate utilization of the outcomes of those studies and the guideline tariff that was produced as a consequence. But I would say that largely, there was certainly a lot more consultation than was experienced in the context of dispensing.
I was under the impression that what the Court found in the High Court to the objection of was the process.
The process certainly did unravel and it did have an issue with the process. But I would say that we, matters were substantially better handled than they were held handled in the context of dispensing fee, which is why I think it certainly generated a lot less, not easier as a consequence.
Thank you. Continuing from the previous slide. So the result of this whole process over the years is that we have had no new codes introduced.
In the lack of compliance, I'm accompanied by May M. Peddie, Madiisa M. Opa.
Yes, for the record, would you please spell your name so that there's no mistake of order?
Okay. My name, M. O. N. A. T. A. U. The surname is T. L. H. O. L. O. E. I will then ask my colleagues to introduce themselves.
My name is May M. Peddie, M. O. P. A. Madiisa. Peddie is spelled M. A. K. A. W. E. D. I. Surname is M. A. K. G. O. P. A. dash M. A. D. I. S. A. I'm from the Office of Health and Health Compliance, Directorate of Disease and Emposment.
My name is Debra Lamora, L. A. M. O. L. A. for my surname. I'm from the Office of Health and Health Compliance from the Inspectorate Directorate.
Okay, please, would you indicate who's going to lead the presentation?
Okay. May Lamora is going to take us through the presentation.
Yes.
I understand that the companion has actually received the material that we sent. And we just want to highlight just a few things that, you know, our office, just to just to go through the background together. And the Office of Health and Compliance was established some years, a few years ago. It started as a cluster in the National Health Amendment Act. The cluster was named Office of Health and Compliance. But after the proclamation of the Act, which was then a national health bill, and which later became the National Health Amendment Act 12 of 2013, the Office of Health and Compliance was born. And it was officiated by the inauguration of the Board of the Office of Health and Compliance in 2014, January, which was confirmed by the Minister of Health and Compliance. Now, according to what we have provided, in terms of the conditions that gave rise to the old, the old HSC, it has been the vision of the National Health Department of, to deal with the shortcomings or the inefficiencies in the quality of health service. In other ways, there is an acknowledgement that particularly in the public health sector, there are shortcomings, the quality of health service delivery is unacceptable. And for the quality to be improved to the standard that is desired, there was a need to standardize practices. And what actually happened is until 2011, there was a policy document created, which is known as the National Course Standard, which stipulates the minimum standards that needed to be complied with by all health establishments throughout the country, public, private, all types of health establishment, hospitals, community health centers, clinics, and other primary healthcare establishments. Now, for the standards to be established, we also see later, there was some benchmarking done. And in fact, after the constitution of what we call this open document for, in which benchmarking practices are compiled, there was, in addition to the, a trip to the secrecy, the level, the quality of care that is expected will then be attained by all, everyone that needs those services. In terms of reasonable effective competition, which is perhaps part of what is the interest of the commission at most, as parity in the public and private health sector as a service provision. And this is what is now envisioned in the National Health Insurance Package. That at the end of the day, one of the things that made this office to be created was to promote quality of, of health care such that by the time the National Health Insurance is implemented, the requisite quality is of the standards that is acceptable to all. But also, in that, through standards, you expect the behaviors, like we were hearing in the previous presentation, that, you know, there will be things that are not envisaged to be happening, but they would be happening. So with standards that are known by all, and on which compliance is expected, we hope that individual behaviors will be improved. Now, this is just a continuation. We're on slide nine. Slide nine, sir? Sorry to take you very quickly, but once and for all. Okay. In terms of this framework, it was created to assist in a nutshell, to indicate to any party that is interested in the global view of how the Office of...
You can't, where you see that we also intend to provide the, as in the... Is to try to make sure that when the nonsense standards are implemented, they are also at the same level in terms of understanding what is exactly. Because when you look at the standards, whether you say, particularly based on the national cost standards, those are minimal, you know, quality standards, what you expect to get, any type of a health establishment in a position to comply with. And therefore, as a regulator, it becomes very important because you also say a role of near quality assurance, that it is in that process you take along those that are going to be inspected, but therefore they become your stakeholder.
I understand that the nonsense standards were developed after consultation with, with this, or what did you say?
Basically, what we are saying is that when the process of piloting happened, because as Melamola has indicated, that there was a best benchmarking that was done with the Quality Care Commission. And from there, what actually happened is there was a process of piloting. And in that process of piloting, the private health sector, they're understanding the record is that they were also participating in that process so that they are able to look at those standards and see how applicable they will be within the year and time.
Now, what is it that was being piloted?
Okay. And we talk about nonsense standards and regulations. However, the actual assessment to check whether those nonsense standards, particularly on, on the ones that refer to that, that are, the regulations that are pertaining to nonsense standards, are linked to what we call the assessment tools. Now, what we, what we do when we enter a health establishment, we use the assessment tool. The assessment tools contain measures that are more phrase in an evidence-collecting format. So that at the end, you are able to say, if I have asked you five questions, they will tell me whether you are compliant with this particular, one particular norm or standards. So we basically refer to nonsense standards. But when we, 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 we check that you are compliant with the nonsense standard, we will be using an assessment tool. However, we may have to distinguish the two processes where the nonsense standard, as regulations, are being consulted on, and the other process where the assessment tools, which can test the very same nonsense standard, are now being piloted to check the feasibility and applicability, as the article says. The, the process of, of checking, of engaging on nonsense standards development is one that is more legislative, because now we're looking at the very same nonsense standard becoming regulation, which is propagated and enforceable, but...
Let me understand this. As I understand it, your statutory function is to monitor compliance by the health establishment with the nonsense standards. Now, have these nonsense standards been developed? And they have not been prescribed?
Chair, what is basically happening is that we have developed, like you initially, there, there was a set of cost standards that were developed, which is the policy document for, for the National Department of Health, which is what commonly people refer to the Green Book. But now, if you look basically at the Act in terms of that monitoring, it requires that you monitor against prescribed nonsense standards. So to respond to that, there's regulations that have been developed that are still in draft at this point in time, because as Melamola has indicated in the presentation, we are waiting, awaiting promulgation. So those nonsense standards are basically what is going to be monitored again. The health establishments are going to be monitored against...
In short, what you're saying is that you've got draft regulations which prescribe norms and standards that must be complied with?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the reason why net pay took issue with you when you tried to enforce this? I understand.
Yeah, basically, that was the reason, because the year response in terms of what needs to happen is to say that at this point in time, you learn that nonsense standards that are prescribed, therefore you do not have any jurisdiction with us.
If we can go to slide twenty-two, just to iterate on the discussion now. Just slide twenty-two.
How were nonsense standards that do not apply to health establishment included in the nonsense standard? I would have thought that the first thing to do would be to look at the establishment, it what, and how, it what nonsense standards to develop in order to, for it would apply to those, as opposed to having the norms and standards first and thereafter, see whether they would apply to... How does this process unfold?
Okay, Chair, to try and respond to that. Remember what we indicated initially, is that the National Course Standards, which is a policy document, it looked at a number of areas of what we call domains, within a health city and the seven of them. Now, within those domains, for you to respond to them, you would then have the standards, and those standards for you to be able to answer them. There will be a set of questions that you need to, to follow through. So what happened is that, because this document, when the office was started, while it was still a cluster within the National Course Standards, it was basically what we were doing, we were calling them mock inspections. And the idea was to also learn in the process. And based on that Green Book, as we're going through the health establishments, because when you speak of health establishments, you've got different types, you've got your primary healthcare, which are your clinics, your C and Cs. Then you have your district hospitals, your regional hospitals, your central hospitals, your tertiary hospitals. Now, what happens is that you find that certain of those would not really be applicable within a primary healthcare city. So that is what she's trying to explain. But moving forward in terms of the regulations that are being developed, we've tried to also come up with guidance to say, this will not be applicable in a clinic, but in a hospital, so that that confusion is taken out.
Now, the norms and standards, were they not, sorry, the norms and standards, were they not first mentioned in the National Health Act of 2003, is it? Is it right?
Yes.
Right. That was more than thirty, thirty years ago, was it? Now, were there any norms and standards that were developed testament to the National Health Act, then?
The way the public health sector is structured, and the one informs what we call nonsense standards, is actually practices. Now, what we always said is, the nonsense standard, the National Course Standards, are not really new. As a consolidation of standards of practices that were being adopted differently in different provinces and throughout the country, there was a realization that standards prevail, but they are understood differently, they are adopted differently. Now, through the National Course Standards, there was a consolidation of such practices based on the norm. They are not necessarily something new coming from nowhere. They are basically a consolidation of practices that are adopted throughout the country in different ways throughout the, you know, the, the health departments in the country. So I'm not sure if it covers the answer here, but basically, National Course Standards are not out of the vacuum. It's a consolidation of practices, best practices particularly, that were utilized or adopted in different ways throughout the country. And in terms of why, one of the, what Chair also asked was, couldn't there be, be, couldn't it be foreseen that certain things are not necessary? And of course, when, when, during the process of developing standards, you always look at the ideal situation, you always look at what is envisaged to be achieved. But the moment you start testing very, very ideal, you find that there are challenges, there are different circumstances that affect that very, a, a principle or, or, you know, indifferently. And hence, what we're saying is, one of the principles of standard development is that they must be achievable, they must be easily understood. And if you test them and you find that even the people that you want to know about those standards are not able to understand them, then we have to, we have to go back and say, how best do we use this principle in a, in a more, sort of, consumer-friendly way? The consumer being the health establishment itself.
Yeah, I understand. I think the answer to the question that I asked probably comes from what you've said, and that is, you know, these are standards which have been applied from, over the years, by different provinces, as I understand it. And what you really did was to put those together. And it was against the background that you had to test whether do they apply these dates, that's right? Okay, I understand.
Chair, I would prefer my colleague, Ma Kedi, to talk to the consequences that ensues when there is non-compliance to nonsense standards.
But before you, you leave this, this one, this line, I want to understand that there are two sets of regulations. There'll be those regulations that prescribe the nonsense standards. And then there will be those regulations that would now deal with the procedures for enforcement, for compliance, implementation compliance, and so on. Is that right? Now, when you say the regulations are presently before the minister, are you referring to both of these sets of regulations? And both of them have been published for comments, they have received the comments, they have taken into consideration the comments, and all that they require, such as signee, they are approved by the minister. Now, do you know when that's going to happen?
Thank you, Chair. We don't know the exact date, but from our side, we are awaiting the translated versions. We sent the two regulations to translator, to translate into two additional languages, which is Zulu and Nandangshu, as required by the official, Use of Official Languages Act. So we are not sure as to when is it that they are going to be published. But can, maybe estimate by the first of July?
Why first of July?
I'm taking...
Just guessing.
I'm, I'm, I'm taking into consideration the, the internal processes that are still going to follow at the department after receiving the translated versions.
And of course, the minister can't, will not be able to promulgate until such time?
Yes.
You've got these translations?
We are awaiting.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So until such time that there have been those translations, then the minister can act?
Yes.
So the board is not ready on the minister's court?
Not at this stage.
So that's why you, you see, you think that by July, the translation will be there? I understand.
I'm taking over from Melamola, and we'll be talking about the consequences of non-compliance with the nonsense standards. This relates to enforcement. So I just want to highlight that as the office will adopt it, principles that are going to be followed for enforcement process, which is accountability, trility, proportionality, transparency, and consistency. transparency, and consistency. This is just to ensure that people are held accountable for non-compliance and that compliance enforcement is only targeted to those non-compliant health establishments. Whether that the enforcement action to be taken should be proportionate to the non-compliance. And the office is also or wants to be transparent with regards to issues of non-compliance and enforcement and consistent when dealing with issues of non-compliance, taking into consideration that each case has to be dealt with on its merits. We enforce to protect health users against harm or the risk of harm, to also ensure that healthcare users receive healthcare services of a suitable standard. So in terms of the act, as well as the draft regulations pertaining to the functions of the office, any person that fails to respond to a request for a response from the office or who gives a unsatisfactorily response to our request shall be held accountable. And after taking into consideration of all the factors listed in Subregulation Three, Subregulation Three will refer into Subregulation Three of procedural regulations, number twenty-two. Pardon me, procedural regulation number twenty-four, which deals with the consequences of non-compliance. So if a person in charge of a health establishment fails to respond, the office may recommend the request or the non-compliance to the relevant authority. By the relevant authority, we mean the relevant embassy of health or any other person responsible for health at a district level. Can we go to the next slide? In terms of the act, these are the enforcement powers that the office have for persistent non-compliance. So if an inspection is conducted and a health establishment is issued with a notice of non-compliance and still fails to comply, the office will then consider giving a warning for the breach and request a return reason, a return response for the non-compliance. So if the two fails, the two enforcement actions, the office will then recommend to the relevant authority. Just want to also highlight that in terms of the act, enforcement should be progressive. So that's why I'm mentioning that if the two fails, then we are going to escalate to the relevant authority for intervention. So if the non-compliance persists, the office will then revoke the certificate of compliance issued and recommend to the minister closure of group or part of the health establishment. On this one, we'll be taking into consideration the nature of the breach and the effect that it poses to the public health users or health employees. But before revoking a certificate of compliance, a health establishment will be given an opportunity to make representations. This is in a form of a hearing. There will be a ad hoc forums or committees appointed as and when necessary to hear matters relating to revocation of certificate of compliance or where there's a need to impose a fine. So before we can enforce using either of the two, a health establishment will be given an opportunity to present its case and highlight issues related to the non-compliance or what challenges are there that prevents them from complying.
Who's being fined?
The health establishment.
And that would directly be deducted from the money that is available for care?
Yes, unfortunately. So if a health establishment is fined, then the health establishment will be liable to pay the fine. And then another enforcement power that the office has is prosecution or referral for prosecution. This refers to if there is an offense in terms of the act. The act has listed a number of offenses on which one can be held liable or maybe referred for prosecution. So this is one of the enforcement measures that the office has and that the office can use. On prosecution, it can also include wherein there was a wrongful conduct of a health practitioner. An example of which can be with regards to treatment of a healthcare user wherein there was maybe, or there can be, a proof that a healthcare user has conducted or committed an offense or a criminal offense. So the office can also refer the matter for prosecution. Next slide, please. Here, we're just highlighting the link between the office and the NIH.
My first question really, really just one for clarification. What is the relationship with? Maybe that's not the right way. But I just want to know, in terms of what the office is doing, I'm interested in how one can sort of compare what you're doing with COSASA. If there is any working relationship, what is at stake there?
Thank you for the question.
So may I just, that's the concern for? Health standards accreditation or something?
No, we are aware of COSASA. It actually was in existence before the office came into being. And it was, it is, I'm not sure now how active it is in the country, but I hear it's more active outside the country than it is in the current area. It is doing, or it was doing licensing, accreditation, actually, accreditation of the establishment with the standard that they had set. Now, one of the most learned differences is it is a voluntary organization or entity. While the Office of Health Standard is a legislative entity because it's spawned out of the National Health Amendment Act. And also that the Office of Health Standard is not going to be doing accreditation. It will offer certificate of compliance where there is compliance and a compliance notice where there is no notice. So accreditation is more of a, is a bit of a different process from a certification.
Yeah, which leads me to the next question really, about whether the office is really at the back end. Meaning there are issues, we come in and we say, you must fix this. But what about upfront? My first question, I know that in terms of what the role of COSASA, as I understood, was well, was that a part of getting a practice number from the Board of Healthcare Funders, COSASA needed to have had some input as part of you getting the practice number. Now, COSASA may not be, certainly is not a regulator as the office is. But purely by that, it means if you wanted to be practiced, you needed to have a stamp from COSASA. Does the office not see the need to sort of intervene at that level before I start opening my hospital? That's the first question.